Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order. And at this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Victor Leal to stand in for Commissioner Sanchez's leaded presentation.
How many, Father, we just asked for your presence this evening, and you just blessed this commission, give us wisdom. Lord, we ask that you bless the citizens of Harlingen. Lord, we ask for you to watch over all of the employees of the city, Lord. We ask especially over the incident this weekend, that you just allow those officers to get back to the normal swing of things, and you be with the families of everybody that was concerned. Lord, we just thank you for just this ability to have this forum, be able to conduct the business of this city. In Jesus Christ holy name, we pray.
Ma'am, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. We'd like to say that we're happy to have you here in our City Commission meeting tonight. We hope that you participate as we go through our business. Item one is a public announcement of events. We'll start with a presentation by Danny Haney, the president of the Rio Grande Valley Burning Festival regarding the frame to 2012 festival poster. Haney?
Good evening. Congratulations to the newly elected commissioners, and also to the re-elected commissioners. My name is Danny Haney, I'm president of the Rio Grande Valley Burning Festival. Let me start by saying that November's festival was a huge success. Our numbers were up, everything went smooth as silk. Lot of, lot of, we did surveys, we got a lot of compliments, a lot of positive feedback from the participants, but we normally expect that. Just a little anecdotal story. I get my feedback from the vendors that come to the trade shows. These are vendors that travel all over the United States, optical vendors, national reps for optical companies. They do festivals all over the country, they do festivals internationally. I like to go to them, to get feedback from them. And lots and lots of them have been coming here, some of them have been coming for nineteen years to this festival, and they said this is the best festival that we've ever put on. I just want to remind you that even though I'm president, I'm just one of many, many volunteers who put this festival on. It's entirely staffed by volunteers. We're looking forward to this November, which will be our twentieth annual event. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city for your continued support, both financially and logistically. We certainly couldn't do it without you. I'd also like to throw out a kudo to Gabe, the assistant city manager, for helping us lots of times when we had questions, we'd mention him. Oh, it's the angels, whores. I'd like to present the city with the nineteenth annual Burning Festival poster. You have eighteen of them downstairs, this will be nineteen, and looking forward in November to make it twentieth. We can't thank you enough for what you've done for us. We're glad that we can put Harlingen on the map, both nationally and internationally. But we're also glad that Harlingen has been a great host of tens of thousands of people from around the country and internationally to come see what we have to offer down here. If I may impose upon you all to get a group picture, Mayor, city manager, and the commissioners, if you could get a picture here. I'd hope to post this on our website for all of our 2013 participants. This is, this is the whitetail hawk, one of the thirty or so indigenous species of birds that we have in the Rio Grande Valley that occur nowhere else in the entire world. I'm an old yearbook photographer, so I'm used to some of that stuff.
All right, well, hand that to Amanda, and she'll take her place. Let me, let me just tell you all a little bit about Danny and Susan. And I know they're not here for any individual recognition, but I would like to recognize them because they're folks of the neighborhood. About six years ago, they unfortunately lived on the east coast for all their lives, and they finally discovered Harlingen, and got here as fast as they should. And they're just, they're poster children for one of the great things that we have here to offer, all the great things we have to offer here at Harlingen and the entire Rio Grande Valley. And when they, but when they got here, they didn't, they didn't just sit back and relax and enjoy the sights. They rolled up their sleeves and have been working to make Harlingen a better place, to make it more accessible and known to all of our ecotourism folks and burning people throughout the valley. So we want to give you a special thanks for all that you do and everybody connected to the festival. It's just a wonderful thing for our community, and we're so happy for all of the great things that it brings to our community. So we're just glad to be a part of it, and we'll hope to continue to support you for after next year, another twenty years. We're waiting on the folks from University of Texas Brownsville, so we're going to skip over that item until they arrive. Are there any other announcements of public events?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I just wanted to brief everybody on the number of city events, city-sponsored or city events that we put on ourselves that are coming up. Not this weekend, but next weekend, sixteenth and seventeenth. The city is hosting the Jalapeno One Hundred, this is the twenty-third year of that event. The Century Ride is Saturday, the Five and Ten K Run is Sunday, so there can be a number of folks in town for the entire weekend. The Saturday after that, the twenty-third, we just found out the Salvation Army is going to host their eighty-fifth anniversary celebration at Gutierrez Park. And I think that's something that we should, for a number of reasons, we should all be proud of. In that when the Salvation Army came to us, we didn't have to sell them on Gutierrez Park, they wanted to put it in Gutierrez Park. And so I think the time and effort we put into the park, improving it over the last few months, is obviously paying off. And again, in the upcoming weeks, you'll hear more about Kid Fit, Champs Camp, which is during spring break, the big Easter egg drop, Zoey Fest, and then Blues on the Hills coming up. Those are in the planning stages, you'll hear more about those the coming weeks. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
I have an event.
Any other announcements of public events?
I do. Good evening. The event that I have will be February the twenty-fifth, ten to the, I'm at the, at the public library. It's called Cancer Awareness Group. And it just goes to show you that anybody can get cancer, and we're getting this group together, we got this group together, to discuss about cancer awareness, okay? Like everybody knows that we have a wonderful professional city attorney that is, has cancer, she's cancer-free, and that opened up the eyes to a lot of people. It will be fair to say that if one of police officers are under a lot of stress, as our city attorney is, one of our firefighters who is under a lot of stress, or anybody in the city who is under a lot of stress, will not be retaliated, fired, as simple as that.
All right, ma'am, you can sit down.
So please attend the meeting to discuss, yes, I have another one.
Give the, sit down, give the announcement of the event.
Well, the other event, there's another one, the event that I have.
What's the other event?
The other event is to teach people how to read the city charter. According to the city charter...
All right, you can sit down.
Well, that's an event that we're having.
Go ahead and sit down.
Well, that's not fair.
We're going to go on to item two, which is board member recognition. And that person that we have to recognize is Arturo Gonzalez, the golf, the golf course advisory board. Is Mr. Gonzalez here? All right, then we'll go to item three, which is the presentation following proclamations claiming. First one is a proclamation of congenital heart defect awareness week. We have some folks here that are... Hello, hello. We have with us, are you Heather?
Yes.
Heather Silva?
Yes.
And David?
Yes, sir.
And these are, they're twins?
Yes.
Erin and Paige Silva.
Yes.
Wait, anybody else? All right, well, we have a proclamation in the reasons follows. Whereas congenital heart defects are the most common type of birth defect in America, affecting tens of thousands of newborns each year, and thousands of deaths annually. Whereas a child is born every fifteen minutes with a congenital heart defect, and research continues to be grossly underfunded in America. Of every dollar that government spends, one medical funding, on medical funding, only a fraction will be directed for congenital heart defect research. And whereas severe heart defects often require multiple surgeries, a lifetime of medications, and preventative measures to maintain a working heart and a healthy body. For some people, their only hope is a heart transplant. And whereas congenital heart defect is a chronic disorder requiring lifelong, ongoing care, while long-term outcomes are unknown, and the risk of additional problems is high. And whereas the mortality rates of congenital heart defects have dropped nearly forty percent in the last eighteen years, proving that bringing awareness of congenital heart defects is essentially preventing death of thousands each year. And whereas congenital heart defect awareness week is served February seventh and fourteenth to increase public awareness and education about these defects, now therefore, to be resolved, I, responsible Mayor of the City of Harlingen, behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim February seventh to fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, as congenital heart defect awareness week. So we'd like to thank you for bringing this to our attention and letting us participate in my issue of this proclamation. It's for this important effort to let folks know about this, about this condition. So if there's anything you'd like to say, we'd like to look over to that town.
I sincerely thank you, sir, for that opportunity. I have the fortunate opportunity to speak with Mr. Castillo, and he, as a representative of the city, was quick to be helpful and just honor every request that I put before him in the city. And so I thank you and your wonderful staff, the city's been great to us. We moved here to Harlingen to have our twins, and they were born premature, so they started off at one and two pounds. And so we're very fortunate, we love the city, and it's not a surprise that you're being so generous and kind. And we just wanted to say thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations, and thank you, guys, we're glad that you came out this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Green. All right, the next proclamation we have is for the Rotary Club's anniversary. We have some Rotarians, any Rotarians here? Didn't want to come up for this proclamation.
Oh, yeah?
A lot of folks, everybody. I'm here now as president of Rotary Club this year, don't let me introduce myself.
I'm here with fellow Rotarians Danielle Altenberg, Trey Peacock, our president-elect Juan and Connie Salas, and Scott Alex here with the Harlingen Rotary Club.
All right, whereas the Rotary Club of Harlingen was established in nineteen twenty-three and provides civic-minded business and professional men and women with an enjoyable and organized way to make a contribution to our city and to deeply areas of the world. And whereas over the years, the Rotary Club of Harlingen has provided invaluable service and badly needed financial support, both in the Harlingen community and internationally. Whereas the history, principles, aims, and objects of Rotary International have been honored by the Rotary Club of Harlingen Rotary Club for ninety years. And whereas in this ninetieth year of service, the club continues its storied history of service with projects like the seat at the table bleacher installation at the Harlingen Boys and Girls Club, Operation Outreach Afghanistan, School Supplies Drive, Adopt a Highway, Cleanup, Support for the Hands to Honduras School and Water Project, Colliot Eradication, sponsorship and support for four high school interact clubs, scholarships, and financial support for numerous local nonprofit organizations. Now therefore, I, responsible Mayor of the City of Harlingen, prepare by proclaiming February sixth, two thousand thirteen, as Rotary Club of Harlingen Day, to call upon all citizens to recognize this special day. So congratulations to the Harlingen Rotary Club. Anything else you want to say?
No, I just wanted to express, on behalf of all of our members here, and all of our membership in the club, this is our sincere gratitude for y'all, and Rotarian Mike Besmer, past current president, sitting up there, for all of your recognition. And it's really appreciated to do this work in a community that appreciates it. So we thank you very much.
Well, thank you for everything that Rotary Club does for the city of Harlingen.
And when's the shrimp cook-off coming?
February twenty-first. Thank you for asking, yes. February twenty-first, at Casa de Amistad, we'll have our nineteenth annual shrimp fest, bold shrimp plate and auction, lots of fun, and...
I have ten tickets in my card if I want to.
The information's also on our website.
Okay, yeah, come on out and shrimp it.
Thank you.
It's going to the item four, which is the neighborhood food suite. You spend here at the East Jefferson from Twenty-Fifth Street to Twenty-Fifth Street, District Two.
Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and give that presentation, and we'll let them crank up the PowerPoint so we can take a look at it.
See, Charlie, we're doing the clean sweep before that one.
Which one? How does it down? Okay, I'll be there, thank you.
Charlie, can you run that for me? Yeah, just to start off with, I think for most of the regulars that come to the City Commission meetings, we go over this usually in the first, the first meeting of the month, because every month is a scheduled Saturday, the first Saturday of the month, where we schedule a cleanup in a neighborhood around the town. So in this particular one, this happened to be a really good event, because as you can see, we picked up nine point two-six tons of debris from this area. And fortunately, we had the cadets come from the MMA, otherwise some of us that were out there would have had sore backs that night, and maybe bumps and bruises that we did, we avoided. But as you can tell, we, we picked up a hundred and five tires out of this area. And there's a, there's our force there, we had a, definitely a force, and we definitely ran into some yards where we spent thirty, forty minutes doing some cleanup. And I just want to, just want to invite the public, and whenever they have, we have these in your neighborhood or in the area, participate, you can get rid of some stuff, and you've got some help to get rid of it. We cleaned up some yards, I want to thank Commissioner Leal for coming out and helping. He was there, and he definitely has sweat equity into this process. Particularly though, the MMA group, they helped us, we did have some other, we did have another group from the, I think it was the Hester Juvenile Safety Center was also there. And once again, this is a, this is a great success for the, for the City of Harlingen. It's something we've been doing monthly for, I don't know, I guess a year and a half, or two years now. And we have definitely cleaned out some of the neighborhoods to go along with the demolition that the city attorney's office has been leading throughout the city. And the quality of life for the citizens of Harlingen is getting better every month because of the efforts from the staff. And I want to thank the staff again, they're out there every weekend, you know, that we have this event, and they take time from their families, and they participate in this on a monthly basis. Some of us hit and miss during the, during the year, and don't meet, don't make all of them, but the staff makes all of them. And they make a, this has a great impact to the community in terms of cleaning up our neighborhoods. And again, I just want to thank everybody, and the MMA particularly for coming out at this particular time. It just happened to be in my district, and we just definitely had to work for you, so I know that, that... And it feels good to volunteer, and I just encourage everybody to look at the schedule on the city's website. It's coming close to you one day throughout the year, and you can either come out and volunteer or, or clean your yard out, and we'll help you, and we'll help you get it done. So again, there's a group picture, and we just have good volunteer...
Okay, why don't we hand that off to the folks? Right, we have some folks who are going to be here. So, welcome, welcome, we're glad to have you all here. And echo what Mr. Leal, which is what, talking about, we want, we want to thank you and recognize all of the participants, and we have a certificate here for each one of them.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that very much.
So Sergeant Major Kinsley. Well, we want to welcome both of you here, and we want to thank you so much for working, volunteering, and doing this stuff, not just this Saturday, but almost every Saturday in this town. They're out there doing something to help the City of Harlingen, and they do a lot of great service for our community. So thank you so much. Would you like to say anything?
No, I got a great, great bunch of young men that like to get out and help out the city, and we're very proud of them. We're looking forward to the next one, next one, so we'll be back.
Sergeant Major, thank you very much.
Our pleasure.
We'll see you later.
All right.
Is anybody here from the Cameron County, just from Peter Piper Pizza? They have certificates still in the room, too? And we'll get that, we'll get that to them, so thank you. Are we ready for the UTB presentation? All right, then we'll go back to item one B, which is the presentation by Professor Murad Abu Slem and Professor Eric Diaz with the University of Texas at Brownsville Architectural Studies regarding the downtown infill project. I guess Ken's going to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. Some of you in the audience will recall that we've been partnering up with the UT Brownsville Architecture Program over the past several years, they did Gutierrez Park a couple of years ago, and some of their things are incorporated into that. Last year, they did a great land use study for us, and that stuff we're going to be able to use with our upcoming conference in plan. This last semester, they took on a very interesting and creative project where Cheryl Lemburgh is the downtown manager, and the professors worked together to identify some sites that were potential candidates for theoretical infill projects. And the students teamed up into teams, and they were told to think outside the box, and put on their creative hats, and come back with something that they thought would be an interesting infill project for the downtown. So I'm going to turn it over to Murad, one of the professors, and Eric's here as well, and they're going to show you what they did. I can tell you that Cheryl and I went to their final presentations down in the high school, where they had a jury of architects and professors that judged these things. And you'll see for yourselves the end product that they did in one semester of students who were beginning students in architecture, and I think you'll find that it's pretty amazing.
So, Murad? Thank you very much, thank you for working, generous introduction. Sure, thank you very much. Thank you again, thank you Commissioners for having us today. We're always happy and glad to come back and present to you guys some of our students' work. We refer to this as phase three of ongoing collaboration between the program of UTB TSC and the City of Harlingen, and we hope to continue this. So to save time, I'll just move faster a little bit. This is the survey that I mentioned earlier, the students have done last year, trying to identify the type of misuse that we have within the downtown area. And from the map, we, we saw there are very interesting findings. We have a very amount of mixed-use type of buildings, mixed-use we mean more than malfunction. We do have a diversity within the downtown area, we have eight-day spaces, we have residential units, single housing, multi-storied, kind of, topless type of residential units, we have community service units, and so forth. So to move on, these are the potential sites that our students have worked on last semester. And as you can see, we're concentrated in Jackson, Van Burn, and some up in Monroe Avenue. So we did a presentation in December in front of professional architects and designers. And today here, we can share with you samples of these projects, and just very briefly, without going into too much detail. So the first team was Juan and Angela, they walked on the corner of Van Burn and A Street. And as I'm sure most of you are aware, this area is currently vacant. We have this huge parking lot on the right of the screen, and then we have the green area of the area which is used currently as, you know, some event venue, outdoor, and as understanding outdoor shows and so forth. So the team here came up with what a concept called Urban Village. And basically, what they tried to do is to create this kind of mixed-use development where you have at the ground level, you have, for, the ground level started from the very left on the slide here, you have retail spaces and some coffee shops, small supermarkets, and so forth. And you have this central courtyard that allow for the users of these retail spaces and the general public to mingle around and socialize, and also it become a socializing space for residents who will be here in the upper levels, which is the second and the third picture here. You have different unit sizes, ranging from studio type to two-bedroom, three-bedroom. Again, the idea is to create a mixture of residents within the, within the village. And each unit has its own terrace, private terrace that oversees either the courtyard or the street. If we move on, so this is what we see right now, this is the current condition. We have the parking lots, and there's a tiny building behind it. And the proposed design, if you move on, this is how it will be transformed, basically. Now, I have to say before, I'm sure maybe said this earlier, we're not, I mean, the students and we as a professor will not say this is the best solution, or this is the ideal. We're just trying to entice some sort of discussion among the local community, the city, and so forth, and, and kind of identify potential ideas, and hopefully take it to the next level after that, and start actually building up, so we can bring downtown Harlingen to its glorious, glory times. So the idea here is to create this kind of dynamic facade, create this kind of excitement as you go through the corner, you have the eight-day spaces at the ground level, you have the units as, with the terraces as identified, some green moves at the town to add to this kind of sustainability and green movement that is very futuristic in the vision. If we move on, this is another view, the same, the same lot, and one more piece, sorry, thank you. Again, another view showing up the courtyard, house accessible from the seat level, the sidewalks, and so forth. The colors, again, these are just our students' ideas, exploration for colors we can use, but again, tied to the heritage of the Asian, you know, the Mexican, the Latin heritage, and using both colors to add vibrant environment. Move on, please. And last, last image again, if you click one more, please, this is the view. And we, as you can notice, when we did, when we came to downtown area, that... And we, as you can notice, when we did, uh, you know, we came to downtown area that murals and painting with walls is a very popular, uh, uh, thing that is happening in Harlingen. So, they allowed for these kind of solid walls to be painted later with local artists to add into this model, uh, you know, uh, uh, aspect within the downtown area. The second site, which is right at the very, the other corner of the lot, which is right on Jackson and A Street. Here, another team, Sergio and Sam, they noticed that, uh, we need to bring more, uh, people to the downtown area, not just from Harlingen, but from all over the valley. And they would notice that there is no performance school in the valley. So, they thought this would be a good site for that. And basically, the design, as you see, you have two blocks. One block is serving as auditorium and a theater that could be a source for revenue for any developer who want to invest in this lot. And it could be open for the school and for the public. And the other unit on the bottom of the screen, uh, the other angle is the administration and the, the classrooms for the students who would be coming to this performance school. And to add it to the mixed use, uh, uh, idea, they added two residential dorm type of units at the upper, uh, limits. So, if you move on, please. So, this is the existing condition as we see it now. And this is what they propose. This is a view of the mass of the auditorium with the glass facade on both sides. So, to allow for continued, you know, connection between the street and the side. You have a cafe, a shop, a tabay, uh, you know, below that niche that's coming out, the reception coming out. And then if you look into other views, this is another view here. And again, you see the courtyard that connect or create a connection between dorm, uh, the theater, the auditorium and, uh, administration, classroom and residential units. And again, the courtyard serve as a socializing, uh, socialized, uh, socializing space for the, for the students, for the, the people who live in this, uh, facility and for the general public. The next, uh, site was on the other side of the, of the same lot on the third room and the first street. And we have Barbara, she worked on by the same. And again, she continued this mixed use idea on the ground level. You have retail spaces, keep going. And then in the other levels, you have residential units with this kind of dynamic facade, uh, please. Uh, and her idea is she wanted to create this con, con, connection between, you know, residents who live on these other levels and the street to add more, you know, uh, life and security and so forth. Keep going, please. I'm going fast because I wasn't going to spend too much time. This is the back of it. And she created this kind of screen which is kind of, uh, perfected to allow for natural ventilation and so on. Uh, upper terraces gardens and, and, and roof garden for the residents to enjoy and, you know, watch over the streets. Keep going. So, just within this block, as you can see, we have three different projects, three different ideas. In a perfect world scenario, we have these three developments happening at the same time and this whole block will be transformed from being just empty parking lot into, you know, a very vibrant block that will add into the overall, uh, quality of the downtown area. If we move on, uh, other sites were right there by Commerce Street. Uh, I'm sure maybe you know what tone I do. That pink lot there, which is currently empty also. These are some of the buildings that, you know, uh, adjacent or across from it, uh, you know, the classic cars, uh, museum, a tea store. You have the garden store on the other side and so forth. So, if we keep going, they propose what they call coffee art. Again, coffee shop in the ground, they have a way, spaces venue for artists, local artists to showcase their work. The upper level, the second floor is more of a studio space and, 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 and exhibition. And then the roof, uh, level is a roof garden terrace where, you know, artists and the local, uh, residents of the downtown area and Harlingen can come and enjoy. This is some renders of the inside, what they imagine is complete office shop kind of, uh, space. Then you have the studios, interior spot with, with flexible partitions to move around. And then, uh, this is how it is right now, uh, the existing condition. And this is what they propose with the building extending the wall. You have this kind of, uh, outdoor space for additional exhibitions, for sculptures and so forth. You have overseeing, balcony overseeing, uh, the commerce of, uh, Commerce Street and, uh, alley, uh, and so on. The next site was on Jackson, East Jackson. This is close to the, you know, the event center, which is the yellow, uh, square right there on the corner. And there is some buildings that I'm sure you're familiar with, this alone. They, they noticed that there's, they are architectural students and nowadays they struggle funding architectural tools and equipments. Like if they want to buy, you know, any trace behavior, they have to go to an academy. So, why not use this lot to invest in that? So, they have a coffee shop in the front, uh, architecture art store, artifacts. They also noticed that, uh, you know, artifacts and art is a very popular, uh, thing in Harlingen. There's too many stores that, uh, you know, uh, work at that. So, they want to create something that could provide sources for equipments and, uh, resources. Uh, this is the existing condition right now. The upper floor, again, residential. All of these, uh, proposals, as you can see, indicate this mixed use idea. So, you have retail type of space in the down floor, coffee shop, restaurants, whatever. And then apartment, in this case, is very luxurious apartment, about two thousand four each block separated with, with a courtyard. And you have this kind of open space in between existing building and the new building to allow for more pedestrian, you know, environment to go and mingle and socialize and sit and so forth. The same side, we have different proposal by different student here. She proposed to have a dance, uh, club, uh, on, on the very front of the, of the, of the, uh, side. And then again, two residential units or four residential units in the upper floors with a major courtyard between them to allow for meditation and, and to create more privacy between the units. Uh, these are the plans. Uh, the ground floor, you have the dance club at the, the front and then the service areas with administration in the back. The upper floors, you have the two, uh, apartment units. And you have, again, within the units, you have different sizes. You have one bedroom, two bedroom, again, to add into the mix. Uh, and these are, you know, the existing, uh, proposed facade, how they fit within the surrounding, uh, buildings. And these are just some of the, so, the courtyard and so forth. The last project I'm going to share with you is on Jackson, uh, one block after the, the one we just talked about between, I think, uh, third and fourth or second and fourth street, third street. She did, I mean, more than did this kind of survey and, and analysis, so I'm going to move on with that. Uh, but her idea is again, to create this kind of, uh, office retail space on the ground floor. Uh, she, she called it Jackson's old plaza with, with, with private spaces in between, courtyard, uh, places to grow, you know, trees and so forth. Then you go to the upper levels and you have apartment units, different sizes, and you have these kind of, you know, terraces and openings and so forth. So, again, the idea here, uh, is to just show potential, so there is a greater opportunity for great proposals, uh, and a way to transform the downtown area. And we hope this will advise, as we said earlier, discussion and, and we'll, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll start from there. So, thank you for your time and, you know, any question, we will have you to answer. I have to mention that we have a small group of students who work on this. Not all of them were able to come, so if you could, if I could.
Yes, please, Sam, stand up.
As I said, we have, uh, there was a total of twenty-five students. It was our second year students, first, first design studio. They are, I'm kind of sure they are very proud and humbled by this opportunity and they're going to take it for, you know, the rest of their life, even add it to their portfolio and talk, talk about this project to their colleagues in the, their next stage of application. So, we appreciate it.
Professor, we want to thank, we want to thank you for the, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just want to recognize my colleague Diaz who worked with me. I mean, we both worked with students on this project. Please, uh, stand and, uh, thank you.
Professor, we want to thank you, Professor Diaz, for all of the work that you and your students have put in on this project. Uh, this isn't the first project, uh, that you all have worked on for the city of Harlingen. And, uh, uh, so many of the ideas that your students and, uh, your partners come up with are so innovative and, and, uh, we, we, we look forward to having a further discussion about some of the things that, uh, some of the ideas that have been generated by, uh, these very talented, uh, creative students that you have. And, uh, we, we really genuinely appreciate, uh, the interest that you've taken in the city and, and the projects that you've done that, uh, will help us, uh, look forward to make some improvements in our wonderful downtown area.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. And again, we are very privileged to have this time, but I can share with you guys and we hope to continue to make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item five, A now, is the regular meeting of November seventh, minutes, uh, the regular meeting of December fifth, two thousand twelve, and the special meeting of January twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, I'm making, uh, a tender motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, uh, motion carries, the minutes are approved. Item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, the consent agenda under number six.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item seven, consider take action to approve and adopt a resolution in support of Valley International Airport being named a designated airport in United States Customs Support Commission. I'm just going to present that, Brian, I thought, Commissioner Leal.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have about this.
This is a, uh, this is something that we've, uh, that the Airport Board, uh, has been working on for a while to, um, uh, have our airport designated as a, uh, uh, in, finally, United States Customs and Board Control, uh, uh, as a designated airport, which would mean that we currently have, we currently have, um, uh, currently, uh, we're, uh, paying, we, we.
We're currently a user fee airport.
User fee, I think.
We have customs here from six AM to ten PM. If we're named a designated airport, that would allow for people flying from Mexico or other countries to overfly port of entries without a thirty-day notice. And if you do that with a wire two-day notice instead of.
Mayor, I'm making a motion that we take action to approve and adopt a resolution.
Second.
All right. Uh, and did you want to say something?
No.
Yeah, I, uh, this is basically goes full-time service and also, it, once we get this designation, would make it easier for us to bring, uh, commercial service in and make it more flexible for our, uh, for our cargo service, even though we're able to serve them, uh, as a user fee airport. This would make it much more flexible and easy for us to, uh, to have more international service. So, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Now, item eight is a discussion regarding the bids and private offers received and the following properties struck off to Cameron County itself and other taxing jurisdictions for a tax sale, inducted on November sixth, two thousand twelve. This will be a presentation by Monica Solis, uh, and Mark Moody, uh, with Limeburg, uh, firm. This will be items A through U and the various legal descriptions of each one of those properties, which have been posted.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Yes, Mr. Garai, since his apology that he was not able to be here tonight. What we have before you is a packet of information that we sent concerning some properties where judgment was taken and the properties were then taken to a tax sale. At the tax sale, we are required to start the minimum opening bid at the lesser of two things. Either the increased value of the property or whatever is due in taxes and costs. If at the tax sale, the minimum opening bid is not met and no one happens to make a, a bid on the property, the property is then struck off to the taxing entities who all have an interest in the property. In this case, it would be Cameron County, City of Harlingen. And in the case of some of the properties, uh, I'm sorry, Harlingenized and, and City Harlingen. What we do at this point to help facilitate our clients getting these properties put on the tax rule is we offer once a year a tax resale where we take those properties where no offers were made at the original tax sale to try to encourage a new buyer to come in. Because at the point that the property is struck off, it is taken off of the tax rule and is not incurring any tax liability. At the tax resale, essentially, we would take the highest offer that is made. If it still does not meet what the minimum opening bid should have been at the tax sale, we are required to come before all of the taxing entities who have an interest in the property to approve the amounts that are, are made. Before you, what you have is a packet of information concerning the twenty-one properties. Seventeen were offered at the tax resale. We did have four offers that came in. They actually walked into our office and wanted to make a private offer on the property. The package should contain all the information as to what the city of Harlingen should have received on the original judgment sale, what offer was made, uh, appraised value of the property, um, what the city of Harlingen will receive if these offers are approved. I don't know if you all have any questions concerning the properties.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So, this is done once a year?
A tax resale is done once a year. We have a tax sale about four times a year.
And then the people who purchase this can rent out the facilities or do whatever they want with the vacant lots or whatever?
Correct. Once ownership goes into a new individual, essentially, it is their piece of property to do what they wish for.
And then that can, then that's once again on the tax rules?
That's correct. It will, at the time that is, a new owner comes in, it's put back on the tax rule and begins incurring that tax liability. The new owner essentially becomes responsible for the taxes and maintenance of the property. Yes, sir.
So, what you're asking does, is forgive the balance between what they're offering and what's on our, you just have to do with the same with the Harlingen and with the county? Is that correct?
That's correct. All entities who have an interest in the property would have to approve the offers that are made so that the title can then be conveyed into the prospective buyer.
You said four of these had a private offer?
Correct. The last four, um, on there, a, an individual, Southern County's Investment Group, an individual entity came in and made an offer on the property, on these properties.
Okay, are there, are there any other questions? There's an action item next on item nine, which is to, uh, accept the, uh, the bids and the private offers. Are there, are there any questions now? Okay, we'll go to item nine, discussion of possible action, resolutions approving the bids and private offers received and the tax resale conducted on November sixth, two thousand twelve, for the above referenced properties.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we take action to accept the, uh, approving the bids.
I'll second that.
Is any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here tonight. Item ten, uh, we're still going to take a glance on that one here. Okay. Staff in the EDCs recommended we sign a be table to consider take action to approve and adopt an agreement between the Bell Corporation and Accion for one hundred thousand dollars. Is there a motion to table? So, move.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item's table, thank you. Item eleven, consider and take action to authorize the staff to proceed with the installation of a speed hub on B Street between Lafayette Avenue and Austin Street as a demonstration project on a trial basis.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, staff is requesting to install a speed hub on B Street between Lafayette Avenue and Austin, adjacent to South Elementary School. Staff met with Dr. Foulidis and his staff with the, uh, school district and their approval to the idea. Uh, we will do this on a trial basis and see how it works through the end of the, uh, school semester.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, thrust after proceeding with these license vehicles.
Yes, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, consider take action to approve and adopt a resolution updating the city of Harlingen's basic emergency plan. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioner, State Manager, uh, this is basically, uh, a resolution of the House Cleaning Item. Um, what it is, it's just an update to the basic emergency plan to include, um, the change of the two new commissioners. And staff has recommended approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item, uh, thirteen, consider take action to approve and adopt a resolution authorizing the city of Harlingen enter into an inter-local agreement with Region Eight, Education Service Center, the participating purchasing cooperative, cooperative known as the inter-local purchasing system.
Mayor Commissioners, this resolution will allow us to utilize another state purchasing network. Is the benefit to us and staff is recommending approval?
Mayor, I'll take, I'll make a motion that we, uh, take action to approve staff recommendation. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we take action to approve staff recommendation.
I second it.
Any discussion?
It should save us a couple bucks, right?
It should save us some money.
They're ready.
And if it doesn't, we'll go after bids.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, consider to take action to adopt, take action to adopt a resolution in support of the University of Texas System Plan to Create a New University by uniting the campuses of American DT Brownsville and the Regional Academic Health Center at Brownsville, Harlingen, Edinburgh, and MacAllen, says to make the new university eligible for funding for the permanent university fund.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we take action to approve the resolution supporting the university.
Second.
Want to congratulate the entire valley delegation for filing the two companion bills in the House and in the Senate. We want to, again, congratulate and thank the governor for making it a priority in his speech to see that the valley is eligible for funding, and especially to our friends, Chancellor Seno and Chairman of the University of Texas System, Gene Powell, for their support of this, and they're asking all the cities to do this. We've already issued a resolution from the COG, Council of Governments, and so, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item fifteen, consider to take action to appoint an official member to Amigos de Vaya Board Directors to replace the city's representative.
Mayor Commissioner, the Amigos de Vaya Board is a nonprofit that was created to provide transportation, housing services to seniors in Cameron, Hidalgo, and Wellsley County. Our previous representative to that board was Commissioner Trevino, and the alternate was Commissioner Propreshon.
I'd like to make, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bezmer to fill this position.
Thank you, but I decline. I'm already on the alternative ways. I mean, I can't do both.
Commissioner Bezmer has declined. The easiest thing to do is to appoint the guy who's not present. Unless somebody else, unless somebody else wants.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Leal.
No, Leal is present, so do you want to do it?
I didn't want to do it, but I will.
But you're willing to do it.
I'm willing. You were my first choice, but I thought that, that Commissioner Bezmer may have felt, fell more into that demographic, so.
All right, well, whatever. Is that a motion that we, or, yeah.
No disrespect.
That's a motion that we appoint Commissioner Leal to be our representative to Amigos de Vaya, is her second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, congratulations.
Do we need the two then, Alton?
I believe I am.
Well, I thought Commissioner Petro was the Alton.
I think that Commissioner is one of the options. The only one that is, was needed-
Was the two, okay.
Commissioner, in place of Commissioner, former Commissioner.
All right, item sixteen, is consider to take action to approve and adopt a resolution calling in an order of the May eleventh, two thousand thirteen general election to elect one member for the position of mayor at large, one member for City Commissioner District One, and one member for the City Commissioner District Two, and any and all other related election matters. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution, is read.
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item seven, consider to take action to approve or reject a renewed fire protection contract with Cameron County Emergency Services District One for fiscal year two thousand twelve, thirteen. Chief?
Mayor Commissioners, City Manager, what I'm presenting is the, for the Emergency Management, I forget my, Emergency Service District for Cameron County for, for the park protection. I brought to you a couple weeks ago, the proposed model one hundred seventy-nine thousand seven sixty-six. After reviewing the months that correlate to the contract, and adding in the cost of vehicles, our amount of expenses would be one forty-eight, four oh seven, and forty-two, leaving us a balance of thirty-one, three fifty-eight, that is recommending approval of the contract.
This thirty-one thousand, is that what we make, or that's what it's costing us in and above?
It's above of what we would, of our expenses.
So it would sort of be a donation to the county?
No, sir.
Okay.
Please.
I said, is that then a donation to the county? Or if that's positive to us?
No, 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 it's a profit to the city.
Okay.
Okay, was there, was there a question?
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eighteen, is consider to take action to approve, they've written notice to terminate the fire protection contract in Cameron County Emergency Services District One for the fiscal year two thousand twelve, thirteen, effective May two thousand thirteen, and one of them may they written notice.
We'll need them now.
No, I think they want to table this.
We request that we table them, yeah.
Is there a motion to table?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nineteen, board appointments to start with, are we here with the, excuse me?
Reappoint Joe Wagner to the Construction Board of Adjustments, and Jacob Dotable to Harlingen Proud.
I've got one for Harlingen Proud, Denver.
For the Meaning Shelter Advisory Committee, reappoint Dee Labansky for the Golf Course Advisory Board with Port Larry Cruz, for the Harlingen Proud at Vicki Camacho, and for the Harlingen Proud at Sergeant Major Fort Kinsley, and for the Zoning Board of Adjustments at the Nervous Simpson.
Yes, sir. And then for the Community Development Advisory Board, it's a reappointment of Sonia Casas. For the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board, Claudia Mincaca. For the Harlingen Proud Advisory Board, reappointment of Adele Plington. And for the Library Advisory Board, reappointment of Norleen Chamberlain.
If you can, turn those sheets into Amanda's, it'll be easier for her to figure out what we just did, or about to do. Is there a motion to approve board appointments? Seven. Is there a second?
Second, Danny.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twenty will be closed executive session on the following items pursuant to Chapter five fifty-one, subchapter D, DTC Government Code, Section five five, one, point zero seven one, consultation with city attorney, seeking legal advice regarding the white wall, white wings baseball, also pursuant to subchapter, sections five fifty-one, point oh eight seven, and five fifty-one, point oh seven one, regarding commercial financial information from a business prospect, known as Project Dunkhole and Project Nebraska, and consultation pursuant to Section five fifty-one, point oh seven one, two, regarding legal advice and counseling connection with the commission's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations related to a port where a, a cost of a port where an eight-liner, sweepstakes, and similar gaming machines. Also, a, pursuant to five fifty-one, point oh eight seven, regarding commercial financial information, business information, attorney consultation on Project Waterside, and consultation on side with counsel, city attorney, for motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those. In favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, will be an executive session, the City Account, Commissioner will go back to the McRae for a little while and discuss these items in executive session. There may be action items afterwards.
Item twenty-five is against the city charter, sir. Item twenty-five is in violation of the city charter, I want you all to know that, because few shouldn't be going to their left of comfortably. They know it, I told them.
You are busy being there for your citizens.
All right, we're out of the executive session at seven fifty-two, and we're going to go to item twenty-one, which is to discuss and approve a resolution directing publication of a notice of intention to issue City of Harlingen, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. These will be for the completion of the reign of family development project out at, for the Sams project, and also the continuation of the best.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution directing publication of a notice in intent to issue City of Harlingen revenue certificates of obligation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twenty-two, discuss and take an approved resolution expressing official intent to reimburse costs of project from obligations to be issued by the City of Harlingen, and other matters related there, too, that's, that's beyond the same, these same projects for Sams and for Ashpershire.
Mayor, I'm also making a motion to put a resolution for the reimbursement of costs.
Second.
Seth Leonard?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three, consideration and appropriate action in connection with the adoption of a resolution imposing a moratorium on an eight-liner, sweepstakes, and similar gaming machine establishments.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution imposing a six-month moratorium.
I'm sorry, would you restate this?
I made a motion that we adopt a resolution imposing the six-month moratorium.
And we have a second by Commissioner Leffler, should need discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-four is consider, consideration and appropriate action regarding possible approval of development agreement with Corona Power Ventures LLP. Is there a motion to approve the agreement subject to the acceptance by Corona?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Be no action on twenty, item twenty-five, I'll stick to item twenty-six, citizen communication. Two minutes.
I have citizen communication. On two, please.
All right, but you're not recognized, Ms. Shomkin. I'm asking the city secretary to name the first person on the list, and you're not it.
I have two.
It's Juan Ortega.
Mr. Ortega, need to state your name and your resident.
Choose the communication you sell on.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Secretary, my name is Juan Ortega. My address is twenty-four zero one, eighty circle, Harlingen, Texas. I'm here in favor of saying a few words, apparently I cannot say much on item twenty-five since it was dismissed, but all I want to say, you know, in light of that action that was taken, that I am very happy with the actions of the city attorney, as well as the actions of the city manager, and I move that you all take into consideration to make him a part of the mainstay and mainstream of the, this city commission, and continue their contracts, so they can stay properly employed, and we can enjoy their good, you know, reputation and their good work, and we can move forward. And that's all I want to say. God bless you.
All right, thank you. Next.
I forgot which one I put on, on that for citizen communication, what was it, the topic?
Yeah, it was Castro Wellness Group.
Okay, that one was for the other one. This, the one I wanted to speak on was on number twenty-five as well, that we need to stop this politicking, and stop and start doing what we're here for, to run a city efficiently and effectively with professional people that, the voters have no choice but to vote for the ones that are out there, but they can be removed. It's called a recount. So as long as we do our work professionally and leave our fine city attorney alone, our fine city manager to do their work, because they get paid for doing their wonderful work, and we appreciate that they're here, and we appreciate that we're going to keep them again, and we need to stop this politicking, because it's going to take us to court, which means that, who, citizens, taxpayers, residents, what, they're going to pay for it, unless they're sued individually, and I think that they should. Thank you very much.
All right, and I believe that's all. If you can sign up for, so ladies and gentlemen, our meeting is adjourned, and thank you very much.